I recognize Tom Arseneau at this time. Please signify the vacation and Councilman Willie Bracken will lead us in the pledge.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Would you all please pray with me. Lord, thank you for this city. Thank you for these people who offer themselves for public service to make decisions that are sometimes difficult, sometimes popular, sometimes unpopular, but we ask that you bless them for their service. Thank you for the people that serve our community and that give of themselves to make this a better city. And we thank you for the citizens of Shreveport. We ask that you would be with these public servants as they deliberate today, that the decisions they make will be pleasing in your sight. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Please, please to join with me in unison and say the pledge.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adam Flurk, please call the room.
Councilman Bradford.
Present.
Councilman Emerson.
Here.
Councilman Jenkins.
Present.
Councilman Corbin.
Present.
Councilman Fleury.
Present.
Councilwoman Lynch. Here. And Councilman Bolton.
Is there a motion to approve minutes of the administrative conference Monday, May 8, 2017? City Council meeting Tuesday, May 9, 2017.
Mr. Chairman.
Second. Motion by Councilwoman Corbin, second by Councilwoman Jacob. Will you please vote? And motion taken. Awards, recognitions, and distinctions of the year. Does the council members at this time have any awards, recognitions, or distinctions of the year?
Yes. If I could, I would like to invite Mary Alice Roundtree to the station. And if I could also, I'd like to move that we suspend the rules to take off the resolution recognizing Mary Alice, which is Resolution Number 99.
Second. Motion by Councilman Emerson, second by Councilwoman Jacob. Any discussion, please. Motion taken.
Okay, and so now I'd like to make motion to adopt resolution.
And second. Motion by Councilman Emerson. Would it be a problem for the court to read it?
Oh, yes, absolutely. Let's do that now. I was gonna save it till afterwards, but we can do that now.
Resolution Number 99 of 2017. The resolution to recognize and congratulate Mary Alice Roundtree for her many accomplishments as the Executive Director of the Caddo Council on Aging. To thank her for her successful efforts to help seniors and children throughout her career, wish her well in her retirement, and to otherwise provide with respect there too, by Councilman Jeff Emerson. Whereas Mary Alice Roundtree was employed by the Caddo Council on Aging July the 29th, 1997, was appointed Executive Director in 1999. Whereas Mary Alice Roundtree attended Louisiana State University in Baton Rouge and received an B.S. in Sociology from Louisiana Tech in 1972, which she graduated Green Army. And whereas Mary Alice Roundtree has worked for more than 25 years in social work, marketing, and public affairs while developing programs for nonprofit organizations. And whereas Mary Alice Roundtree was Director of Public Services from 1972 to 1975 under the Council of Area Governments, which was later renamed the Caddo Council on Aging. And whereas the Caddo Council on Aging has served as a primary agency in Shreveport and Caddo carriage, charged with the mission of leading the needs of residents 60 years of age or over, helping them to maintain their independence and longevity of life in a home environment. And whereas the Caddo Council on Aging provides meals on wheels, in-home services, information and referrals, foster grandparents, bondsman, legal services, and senior citizen dining sites. And whereas Mary Alice Roundtree collaborated with the City of Shreveport to streamline services for seniors at A.T.S.R. sites. The Caddo Council on Aging provides meals, and the City of Shreveport provides a building, site coordinator, and activities. And whereas Mary Alice Roundtree's motto is, "If Caddo Council on Aging does not provide a service, we will direct you to an agency that does." And whereas Mary Alice Roundtree is married to Douglas Roundtree, and they have two children, Catherine and Miller, and six grandchildren. Now that will be resolved by the City Council of the City of Shreveport. We do recommend a legal subject convene, that the Shreveport City Council recognizes and thanks Mary Alice Roundtree for her many accomplishments at the Caddo Council on Aging and for her service to the citizens of this community. And this resolution will be signed by all council members.
Any discussions? Please vote.
And I may join Mary Alice at the podium real quick. May we try to some, so we can think of.
Did it pass?
It passed unanimously, without opposition. Well, thank you, Council, for adopting this resolution. I want to say, as a former board member of the Caddo Council on Aging, and my mother is a social worker and a friend of Mary Alice', so I have known and had the benefit of working with and around Mary Alice for years. Even in high school, if she had a volunteer opportunity, I was gonna get a call.
I did have a volunteer opportunity.
You did, you did. But that's wonderful. And I am really thankful for all of the service that you've provided to our area seniors over the years. And then the rest of the council joins me and wanting to thank you for that.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all that you do.
Thank you very much.
Did you want to take a quick? Monica, you want to jump in?
And I want to thank, before we take the photo off, I want to thank the City Council for a wonderful 20 years. Y'all have not all been here for 20 years, and I've been through many administrations. And I want to thank, I have worked with the most fabulous Caddo Commission, City Council, Board of Directors, had the most fabulous Board of Directors for 20 years, and they've always been supportive. We've never had a problem. And the most wonderful staff at the Caddo Council on Aging, and I'm very proud. Jeff represented that agency. We've always been above board. We're absolutely transparency. And why I'm so reason, wonderful to announce to you our new Executive Director-elect is because she's been our Finance Officer for 70 years along with me, and we've run the agency 50-50 together. I want to introduce Monica Wright, and she is our elect Executive Director as of yesterday. And so, please give her a hand, because she's gonna be, she's gonna do a great job, and the mayor will definitely be in place. And that is very important, so thank you again.
Thank you.
She needs to get used to this microphone, so let's just scare her to death right off the bat, you know?
I just want to say thank you all for all that you have done for Caddo Council on Aging under Mary Alice Ring, and I hope to work with all of you in the future, and I look forward to your support. Thank you.
No, thank you all. I appreciate the opportunity to do that at the head of the meeting. Does any other council member have recognitions in sign?
Mr. Chairman, I see Commissioner Louis Johnston, I want to recognize him. See Commissioner.
Good. Yep. Here.
I had, I'm going to the speaker of Juddson's graduate graduation, and I met the most phenomenal young man that I managed to us to recognize today. Bryce, this is you. Mr. Jones, can you go to the front?
Mr. Jones is a fifth grader, got excelled in math, exceeded everyone in math, exceeded everyone in reading. I mean, they had to bring him back and just tell him just there's his problem because I was the worst. And I just, I mean, I think that we should always appreciate our young men and congratulate them early on, and I was just excited, and I had to bring him up here to the front. Can you just tell us some of the awards that you got, and say your name, what it was.
My name is Bryce Jones, and I got straight A's all year. I had the best outstanding language arts, social studies, math, and science.
I mean, that was top on all. The science fair, I think, was it a national science fair?
Regional.
Regional science fair, I'm sorry.
Third.
Third place. This young man is going places. I just want you all to meet him and just congratulate him on. You've been doing, and again, I'm proud of him. I mean, the whole room was in tenuous that day, not me, because I'm not a crybaby.
Wait, wait, wait. Do you have any advice? I've got a sixth grader and a first grader, and they don't necessarily always make straight A's, so you got any advice for them that I could pass on?
They need to work hard, just to.
I'll pass that on.
Did you want to say something, Monica?
No, sir, thank you. Thank you for inviting us.
Y'all on the right path, I just want to, just want to let me know that, and we're here to keep doing the right thing.
We will.
This is mom. This is Dan here.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All righty. Okay, I want y'all to know, this is the grandson of Vida Samuel.
Miss Vida's in the back.
Miss Vida, where's she at?
Oh, Emroy, okay.
Well, his grandparents, of course, Vida was, V is back there.
Okay, all right.
Of course, Vida was the Deputy Clerk at the Commission for ever. So, this is my grandson. Oh, congratulations, young man.
Thank you.
I just want to say, Chairman and council members, I wanted to also say congratulations to Master Jones. Coming from education for decades, it's always refreshing to see how young people step up, work hard, and study hard to fulfill their dreams, so keep up the good work. And where are you going next year?
Calumille, Maginot.
Calumille, Maginot, okay. Great school. All right. Thank you so much for what you're doing, Mom, to make sure that he stays on task. All right.
And if I could just briefly ask, since it's summertime, and we've got a lot of hard-working students that go into the summer, I love that it looks like you are having fun working hard. You look proud of yourself, and I'm glad that you are. We are very proud of you and of all of our students who work hard to achieve. And, you know, it's hard to kind of remember that hard work is rewarding and is worth it, but you're a great reminder of that. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize two individuals at this time. In the back of the chamber is Ms. Stephanie McKenzie, representing Senator Cassidy's office, and John Barr with Senator John Kennedy. We welcome you here today. Any other council members at this time have recognition? The mayor?
Thank you so much. We have some announcements and some recognitions. Our first announcement, Mr. Chairman, we had the honor last week to participate in the Peace Officers Memorial Service to recognize those who have made the ultimate sacrifice in the line of duty. I just want to say thank you to those who serve and protect our citizens and for their dedication and commitment every day, every single day in our community. I'd also like to thank everyone who participated in our 25th Annual Paint Your Heart Out event. I especially want to thank Mrs. Bunny Moore and her team at Community Development for coordinating this citywide event. Each year, we are able to help about 50 homeowners spruce up their homes. Next announcement, progress is happening at our Shreveport Aquarium. This past weekend, they held a job fair in the Red River District. And of course, also, they had another announcement for an added job fair day-to-day from 10:00 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. So, we hope that our citizens were able to go out and see if they can get a job with that new aquarium. Of course, the aquarium is expected to open late this summer. I want to remind everybody about that, about what American Airlines is doing. Once again, American Airlines will begin a non-stop jet service to Charlotte, North Carolina, from the Shreveport Regional Airport on August 2017. And let me tell you, those tickets have already gone on sale, so if you're interested, please get your tickets early. The service will operate twice daily on a 50-seat Canadaer regional jet aircraft. This new flight to Charlotte, which is one of America's largest hubs, or which is the second-largest hub for American Airlines, will allow residents of their architects to connect to more than 250 domestic and international cities with just one stop. Folks can book flights and get more information for this direct flight on the American Airlines website at www.a-a.com. Today, I also want to recognize Mr. Dave Lung from Music Mountain for donating a trailer of water to the city of Vicksburg, because they have many residents without water after severe weather earlier this month. And Mr. Lung, will you please stand for us if you're here today? Mr. Lung, thank you so much for your service to humanity. You didn't have to do that. He is, has his business here in Shreveport, Louisiana, and we're also very proud to see that we have citizens who have compassion for others, so thank you for what you're doing. Let's give him a hand. Thank you, Mr. Lung, for your act of kindness.
Free advertising, maybe a little free marketing.
Music Mountain, thank you so much. Thank you, sir. Our local businesses are doing wonderful work and being recognized across this state. The Senate Committee on Small Business and Entrepreneurship recently honored Red River Brewing Company with the Small Business of the Day for National Business Week. They will also be recognized by U.S. Senator John Kennedy and the Congressional Record for the U.S. Senate. Do you have anybody here from Red River Brewing today? If not, we just wanted you to kind of know that they did receive that prestigious award, and that is wonderful for a small business from our community. I want to also recognize today the CE Bird Girls Track Team for making history by winning the state championship. It's been 24 years since a Caddo team has been able to win state, win state competing at the highest level of the LHSAA. At this time, do we have a coach here today? Do we have somebody from CE Bird? Okay, come on up. We want to do a proclamation to celebrate their accomplishments. Mr. Chairman, will you please join? Thank you. Congratulations, young people. Thank you. Congratulations. Come on over. Oh, you will. Come on over, Mom. We need moms now. Thank you so much. All right, we're gonna do the proclamation and we'll present it, okay? The proclamation reads, "Whereas on May 6, 2017, at LSU's Bernie Moore Stadium, the CE Bird High School Girls Track Team competing in the Louisiana High School Athletic Association State Track Meet made history by winning the state championship. And whereas it has been 24 years since Caddo team has been able to win state competing at the highest level of the LHSAA. And whereas, the City of Shreveport recognizes the vital role that sports play in the lives of young people in teaching responsibility, teamwork, discipline, and focus. And the City commends these young women for the extra effort and commitment that they displayed to become champions. And whereas, the City of Shreveport also commends parents, extended family members, coaches, and school staff that spend much time and effort in supporting and nurturing students' talents. Now therefore, I, Ali S. Tyler, Mayor of the City of Shreveport, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, May 23, 2017, as CE Bird High School Girls Track Team State Champions 2017 Day in the City of Shreveport, and encourage all citizens to congratulate these outstanding young women for their commitment to themselves, their school, and the community, and for the excellence they represent. In witness whereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause the seal of the city to be affixed. Again, congratulations." We'll take a picture. That's yours, and you take that back to your school and your coach. Okay. Would you like to say something? Okay, she doesn't want to say anything, but she's a champion, everybody. Let's give her another hand. Our next announcement, Mr. Chairman and City Council members, the City will be auctioning its backlogs of adjudicated properties this week through Civic Source. Auctions will begin at $0 plus closing costs. Anyone interested in owning property in Shreveport should attend the auction at 6:30 p.m. Wednesday, May 24, at the Hilton Shreveport, 104 Market Street. I'd like to invite everyone out this week, again, to another ribbon-cutting ceremony, but this time at Bill Cockrill's newly-relevated pool house. It will be held at 10:00 a.m. Thursday, May 25, at 4109 Pines Road. Please come out and join us if you can. Last week, we celebrated the completion of the pool house at Airport Park. Our next announcement, the City of Shreveport is one of only six cities still in the running to land the New Orleans Pelican NBA G League team. We want you all to come to the Shreveport Pelican Pep Rally at 6:00 p.m. Thursday, May 25, at the New BHP Billiton YMCA located at 3455 Knight Street, wear your best New Orleans Pelican NBA gear. Those who attend the Pep Rally will have an opportunity to be filmed in this exciting media tube to lure the team to our city. Also, on Friday, the City of Shreveport invites the public to the ribbon-cutting and grand opening of the newest Red River District tenant, Louisiana Specialty Gifts, at 10:00 AM on Friday morning, May 26, in Suite 800 of the Red River District, 450 Clyde Fent Parkway. Louisiana Specialty Gifts specializes in products that are representative of the Shreveport area, custom vinyl designs, and Louisiana-themed snacks and frozen meals. The gift shop also offers an opportunity for tourists to purchase souvenirs that feature northwest Louisiana. The next one, the City has begun installing signage and preparing roadways for striping to facilitate the bike lanes. Streets included in Phase 1 of the City's plan are Gilbert, Ottley to Marshall, Crestwell Ottley to Stoner, and Ottley Line to Gilbert. All are expected to be completed and open to the public by this Friday, May 26, pending how the weather treats us. I want to thank Bike Shreveport for partnering with the City to promote the new bike paths with this Slow Road Ride month last month, and they will do another one again this Friday. The group also has been instrumental in providing content for the City's new webpage. The City's site is full of information designed to inform bicyclists and motorists about the upcoming initiative as well as rules of the road. We've conducted several media interviews, held two public meetings, and passed out more than 400 door hangers to inform the public about the new bike paths. We continue to serve our citizens with numerous events. The City has supported, since we last met, swimming pool open house at Southern Hills Park, Dean Williams 5K on Clyde Fent, movies and moonbeams showing of Zootopia at AC Steer, swimming pool open house at David Raines Park, pool renovation, basketball court and park, lot renovation at Airport Park, et cetera. We continue to work extremely hard, and I want to say commendation to the team that worked so hard to provide you, the citizens, a better quality of life. Those are the announcements and recognitions. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, the Chair would like to recognize Mr. Arthur Thompson for the purpose of questioning on number 64 today. Mayor, Mr. Thompson, can you give us enough shade?
We received an email from the applicant to resound the property which was the old Shreveport Country Club, and he said that he is withdrawing his application, and therefore ordinance number 6 to Mr. McKenzie was drawn from the agenda.
Okay. Okay. Not this time. Any council members have any questions? Ladies and all, we'll make sure that if you're here for that purpose, you're welcome to study and speak, but I wanted you to know earlier that that application for the Shreveport Country Club has been withdrawn. Mr. Chairman, for that. Mr. Green, here next on the agenda, does anyone have any questions concerned?
I'm not getting started. Green, I see none. Okay. On the, when there's something out on the side of the, on the street, and it's a lot cut down like trees and brush, what's the exact size amount that can be aligned there on the street?
They're usually looking at three to four feet.
Three or four.
Six feet. For the limbs and branches?
Six by six.
And then the diameter of the can't be greater than six.
Can't be greater than six.
Okay.
Six feet.
Six feet, that's what I thought.
But even then, are they supposed to call for a bulk pickup?
Yeah, correct. They'll arrange for a bulk pickup.
Yes. And I got a set, I just witnessed this last week, and one neighbor who called for a bulk pickup caught down a bunch of limbs, and that bulk pickup picked it up right away. Had another neighbor down the street cut a bunch of limbs down and put them on the street, they sat there for a month. So, it got reported finally, and then they picked it up, you know, quickly after it got reported. But it's just showed the importance of calling it in ahead of time.
System works.
Thank you, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Today, we are required to hold several public hearings. Mr. Thompson, please read the titles for the first public hearings.
The first public hearing, Mr. Chairman, will be on ordinance number 41 of 2017, an ordinance levying the tax of 8 and 55 one-hundredths mils per dollar on all properties subject to adleorm taxation within the bounds of the Downtown Development District of the City of Shreveport. And ordinance number 45 of 2017, providing for an increase in the mileage rates whereby the Shreveport Downtown Development Authority shall roll forward to mileage rates not exceeding the maximum authorized rate and levying various taxes totaling 8 and 64 one-hundredths mils per dollar on all properties subject to adleorm taxation within the bounds of the Downtown Development District of the City of Shreveport as defined by Louisiana Revised Statute 332740.38 for the year 2017, and the amounts and for the purposes described herein. Mr. Chairman, would you like to open that public hearing?
Okay, at this time, we will open a public hearing, and does anyone have any questions?
I don't know whether the administration has.
Did you, does the administration have anything to say?
No.
Any one have any comments or questions at this time? Okay, I close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, the next public hearing is on ordinance number 42 of 2017, levying various taxes totaling 17 and 29 one-hundredths mils per dollar on all properties subject to adleorm taxation within the City of Shreveport for the year 2017. And ordinance number 43 of 2017, providing for an increase in the mileage rates whereby the City shall roll forward to mileage rates not exceeding the maximum authorized rate and levying various taxes totaling 17 and 65 one-hundredths mils per dollar on all properties subject to adleorm taxation within the City of Shreveport for the year 2017, and the amounts and for the purposes described herein.
Okay, now, this public hearing is called order. Does the administration have a presentation? Does there anyone present who would like to speak in favor of these ordinances? Yes, Mr. Craft, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Very briefly, on.
Very briefly, on these two ordinances, this is a modest increase that'll cost me and my wife four cents a month if it passes. We can handle that. But collectively, if the city has to give up $530,000, you can look at it any way you want. It's a fire pumper truck, it's two and a half years of the nip, or it's a whole lot of concrete street panel. I don't think this is the type of thing to cause a voter backlash or rebellion, and I hope y'all would support it, because without it, it just becomes that much more difficult come budget time in the fall.
Thank you, Mr. Craft. Is anyone else here who would like to speak in favor? At this time, is there anyone present who would like to speak in opposition to these If not, this public hearing is closed, and the next public hearing is now called to order. Mr. Thompson, please continue.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, this one concerns ordinance number 51 of 2017, a series ordinance pursuant to the 2016 General Revenue Bond Ordinance, authorizing the issuance of not exceeding $100 million of water and sewer revenue bonds, Series 2017A, and water and sewer revenue bonds, Junior Lean Series 2017B of the city of Shreveport, state of Louisiana, as provided in a notice of intent given by Resolution Number 38 of 2017, adopted on March the 14th, 2017, establishing certain details of such bonds as required by the 2016 General Revenue Bond Ordinance, approving and confirming the sale of such bonds to a group of underwriters led by Seibert, Sisnoz, Shank and Company LLC, pledging the revenue, net revenues of the city's combined water and sewer system to secure such bonds, prescribing the form and certain terms and conditions of said bonds, and providing for other matters in connection therewith. And ordinance number 53 of 2017, a series ordinance pursuant to the General Bond Ordinance, authorizing the issuance of not exceeding $20 million principal amount of water, taxable water and sewer revenue bonds, Junior Lean Series 2017D of the city of Shreveport, state of Louisiana, as provided in a notice of intent given by Resolution Number 38 of 2017, adopted on March the 14th, 2017, establishing, establishing certain details of such bonds as required by the General Bond Ordinance, approving and confirming the sale of such funds to the Clean Water State Revolving Fund, pledging the net revenues of the city's combined water and sewer system to secure such bonds, prescribing the form and certain terms and conditions of said bonds, and providing for other matters in connection therewith.
Does the administration have a presentation or do you still? Is there anyone present who would like to speak in favor of these ordinances? Is there anyone present who would like to speak in opposition to these ordinances? If not, this public hearing is now closed. Okay. I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh... Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm told that I did not read ordinance number 45 of 2017, so we need to reopen that public hearing.
Okay, the public hearing is now called to order.
Uh, ordinance number 45 of 2017 provides for an increase in the millage rates whereby the city, Shreveport Downtown Development Authority, shall roll forward to millage rates not exceeding the maximum authorized rate and levying various taxes totaling eight and sixteen, sixty-four one-hundredths mils per dollar on all property subject to ad lorm taxation within the bounds of the Downtown Development District of the city of Shreveport as defined by Louisiana Revised Statute 332740.38 for the year 2017, and the amounts and for the purposes described herein, and otherwise providing with respect thereto.
Thank you. Is there anyone present who would like to speak in favor of this ordinance? Is there anyone present who would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance? If not, this public hearing is now closed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Thompson, is there any legislation to be added today?
Uh, we have no legislation to be added to the agenda today.
Frank, do we have any?
We have no appointments to be confirmed.
On the agenda? Can I just on the agenda?
I do, I have Mr. Sammy Mears on ninety-four.
You have three minutes, sir.
All right. Sammy Mears, 1901 Centenary Boulevard, Shreveport 71101. I come today with a concern that I thought was going to happen, but I guess that I got a little carried away at the library when I saw it. Word had gotten around that the city officials had met with the Pelican representatives about three months ago and thought about bringing a proposal to have the NBA New Orleans Pelicans come to Shreveport. I was very excited when I heard about this and thought it was a great idea, and it was a super idea in my heart. And of course, I saw it in the paper as well, and I feel like I'm really in favor of this if this support can really work out. I say go for it, and if you can get the Pelicans to come to Shreveport, this would be a super thing. Support the team to come to Shreveport, and the Catop Court Commission voted five to four in support of this for Mayor Tyler's proposal to bring them here, and you got my support. I believe it would be a wonderful idea. I hope it works out. Because also, other sports like amateur wrestling and gymnastics would be a great idea, too. That's how Kurt Angle, who's been in the WWE and other wrestling organizations, got to be where he was at, and now is doing general manager. He got an Olympic gold medal in the Olympics years ago when he was in the amateur Olympics. And that's how Kurt Angle really did this, and he's been in favor of amateur wrestling in the Olympics. It's really a very wide interest in the amateur sports. I say yes, if everything works out, go for it. We need to get people like over there in Pensacola, Florida, Mobile, Alabama, and anywhere else that seems to think that they can get them first. Well, I say we get them before they get us. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have Mr. Kenneth Craft on the same order, ninety-four.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, same resolution, ninety-four. And let me correct myself on the other thing. Sixty-four cents a month, my sinus, not four cents a month, but sixty-four cents a month is what it would cost us on that millage. The Pelicans, the word Pelican, of course, an anagram in my mind is in place. You can put this in place, but my late email to y'all, when I thought about it, I'm listening to Mozart's Horn Concerto Number Four in E-flat major, the fourth selection on the greatest hits of Mozart, and it runs four minutes and four seconds, a lot of fours. And I'm for this thing if we can do this. If we can get a storm-proof building out of it such that, in the event of a tornado, school kids, as is done in Tulsa, Oklahoma City, and Kansas City, are immediately on advice of the National Weather Service, tornado warning and cattle parrots, or watch, either one. Get them there and protect them. They only need to be there twenty, thirty minutes until the twister goes through the area. Oklahoma City did this only two weeks ago. No, no schools were hit, but, but they were prepared. Some schools in Oklahoma City can take an F5, and others will be demolished. There might be money for this from FEMA or Homeland Security. There used to be, when Enterprise Alabama built their new high school, having lost eleven kids. In a March 1st, '07 tornado, they got 75% federal funding. I think it's still available, but I haven't checked any websites. But, but use it, use it for archery and bed mitten and basketball and all kind of things, but also use it as a place where southern Louisiana coastal neighbors can come when the next Rita or Katrina hits, just for a couple days. Use it also mainly, mainly for sports, but, but consider building it to withstand, high enough to withstand floods, certainly fireproof, but build it and construct it, which is, which is done. Might cost a little more, but what a great opportunity we would have for an F5-proof building, and at the same time, and I thought about the problem of why until a colleague, Mr. Madden, reminded me, no parking, but I'm sure we can get a good location for it. And I understand revenue bonds don't need to go to anything but a majority of four of you seven. It's not like a general obligation bond voted of the people. But I was reminded of, uh, looking at the YouTube video yesterday of, of the mayor and her September 23rd BNA, very, very cleverly worked in how a superintendent, four failing schools went to one, and the, and the reserve went from four billion, million to fifteen million, all true. And, and, and we, we succeeded then, but we didn't do one thing we should have done to that bond. We didn't give the schools a single storm-proof building anywhere. Let's not miss that opportunity again. Let's think safety first. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I had, um, several that want to speak on, speak on zoning, on a zoning matter, sixty-four and nothing else that still want to speak, since it was out there down there. Did you all still want to speak?
You better make...
It's, it's still officially on the agenda, sir. Right.
We have no, uh, appointments today, Mr. Thompson.
We have not, Mr. Chairman.
There are no items in the seventh agenda, Mr. Thompson, so please continue.
Mr. Chairman, we're not in a good seven agenda. Resolution number 91 accepts dedication for Dermaine Drive right-of-way at St. Charles Place subdivision unit 515. Resolution 92, we check the page received for higher than the 17-0592 late patrol laws. Ordinance trail, to otherwise provide with respect thereto. Uh, Mr. Chairman, if there are no objections, we need to take up Resolution Number 93 separately. So, if we could move on. Resolutions 91 and 92.
Right, Ken.
Hold on, listen, uh, Councilman Everson, do you want to speak?
That was a little while ago. We'll start using our explicit equipment.
I'm sorry. Do I take that or not?
No, the motion, the motion, my understanding, is just on?
Ninety-one.
Ninety-one and ninety-two or ninety?
Ninety-one and ninety-two.
Ninety-one and ninety-two. Ninety-three is coming up, so.
Motion by Councilman Corv, second. Councilman King. Any discussion? And the motion, pass.
Mr. Chairman, if there are no objections, we would like to take up Resolution Number 93 at this time. Uh, it's a span certain provisions of Chapter 10, uh, many applicable provisions of the United Development Code of the, uh, Shreveport Code of Ordinances relative to sale, dispensing, and consumption of alcohol beverages for the Highland Jazz and Blues Festival located 600 Columbia Street, and to otherwise provide with respect thereto. Uh, there is one amendment. This amendment changes the title. Uh, it adds, um...
Chapter 62.
What?
Chapter 62.
Chapter 72. Sixty-two. Uh, to the title, and it replaces the entire resolution.
So moved to?
Oh, the amendment.
amended. Second. Motion by Councilman Everson, second by Councilman King. Any discussion? And that motion, pass.
So moved as amended.
Motion to amend by Councilman Everson, second by Councilman King. Any discussion?
We just require a question. This is the motion to adopt it. We just amended it. It missed the line.
Need to blow up? Up, oh, five minutes. I'm adding that motion, pass.
Mr. Chairman, we're not in a regular agenda legislation, resolutions on second reading and final passage, of which will rely on one reading. Resolution 84 authorizes the mayor to execute a donation agreement between the city of Shreveport and Norris Ferry Road LLC, here and after call owner, and acting herein through William L. Mayfield Manager for the private water and sewer improvements for St. Charles Place subdivision, Unit 14.
So moved. Second. Motion by Councilman Corv, second by the chair. Any discussion? Please vote. Motion, pass.
Resolution 85 authorizes the mayor to entering to a cooperative endeavor agreement between the city and participating high schools through their governing bodies relative to the battle on the border, 2018 high school football showcase, and the use of city personnel, property, and equipment, and to otherwise provide with respect thereto.
So moved. Second. Motion by Councilman Bowman, second by the chair. Any discussion? Motion, pass.
Resolution 86 approves the budget for the Catos Shreveport Sales and Use Tax Commission for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2017.
Motion by Councilman Everson, second by Councilman Corv. Any discussion? Please vote. Thanks. Motion, pass.
Resolution 87 is a resolution finding and determining that a public hearing has been held and that no petition has been filed objecting to the proposed issuance by the city of Shreveport of its water and sewer revenue bonds in an amount not to exceed $120 million, authorizing the officials of said city to proceed with the preparation of the document required for the issuance of such bonds, and providing for other matters in connection therewith.
So moved. Motion by Councilman Corv, second. Any discussion? Please vote.
Second. Second, the motion, Mr. Chairman.
And passes.
Resolution number 98 is a resolution pursuant to LARS 38:2212B-2-3A that extends the time delay for the low bidder of the project construction of Taxway Inn extension to submit its Buy America Act documentation by the Federal Aviation Administration.
So moved. Second. Motion by Councilman Corv, and second by Councilman Everson. Any discussion? Please vote. Motion, case.
Resolution 94 expresses support for the city of Shreveport, uh, in response to the request for proposals issued by the New Orleans Pelicans for the purpose of becoming the flagship community for the New Orleans Pelicans G-Team.
Motion by Councilman Everson, second by Councilman Corv. Any discussion? Please vote.
I need to say something before I vote.
Yeah.
Pretty hard to discuss. Yeah.
Hey, I'm trying to vote to support our application today because I kind of like seeing our name in print all over the place with these other cities, but I, I, I'm going to reserve mine's, you know, as this proceeds, uh, you know, because I've gotten some feedback, but we've not had an opportunity to get a lot of public feedback, and I represent thirty, about 30,000 people, and, and so, I've, you know, gotten some calls and correspondence about it, but, I want to, you know, say these are, these are opportunities I think we do need to take advantage of, um, and exposing our city, ensuring that, you know, that we're interested in these type of economic development opportunities. And so, I will be supporting this state of that reason. Thank you.
And please vote. And the motion, pass.
Number 95 recognizes the accomplishments of Pastor Gregory Kirby, and to dedicate St. Paul Chase Plaza Drive from West 70th Street to Pines Road in honor of his extraordinary life, and to otherwise provide with respect thereto.
So moved. Second. Motion by Councilman Corv, second by the chair. Any discussion?
It's adopted, Mr. Chairman. Resolution, resolution 96 is a resolution to remember and to honor the life of very... Resolution, resolution ninety-six is a resolution to remember and to honor the life of Monsieur May Solon, an active and devoted citizen of Shreveport and to otherwise provide with respect there too. Come in.
Second. Motion by Councilwoman Lynch, second by Councilman Everson. Is there any family here today? Those Malone family?
Thank you.
Please vote. And that motion passes.
Resolution ninety-seven authorizes the mayor to dedicate the four hundred block of Brookbriar Drive in honor of Randy Johnson.
So moved, sir. Second. Motion by Councilman Bradford, second by the chair. Any discussion? And motion passes.
Resolution ninety-eight will allocate additional funds and other charges, civic appropriations, funds budgeted and other charges, promotions in the winter fund, development special revenue fund.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Everson, second by Councilwoman Lynch. Is there any discussion? And that motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, resolution number ninety-nine has already been adopted. We're now to introduction of resolutions. Not to be adopted prior to June the thirteenth. Resolution one hundred is a resolution selecting the times as the official journal for the city of Shreveport, where the period commences in July first, twenty seventeen, through June the thirtieth, twenty eighteen. And resolution one oh one selects the Shreveport sign as the auxiliary official for the city of Shreveport, where the period commences in July first, twenty seventeen, through June the thirtieth, twenty eighteen.
Move for introduction. Vote. Are individual or votes together?
There is a floor for introduction. Please vote.
Some of it, or did we already get a motion?
Yeah, motion. Counselor Bradford is motion, the second by Councilman Everson. And the motion passes.
Chairman, we're now to introduction of ordinances not to be adopted prior to June the thirteenth. Ordinance fifty-six amends the twenty seventeen airport enterprise fund budget. Ordinance fifty-seven amends the twenty seventeen capital improvements budget. Ordinance fifty-eight amends the twenty seventeen capital improvements budget. Ordinance fifty-nine amends section sixty-two, article two, division one of the code of ordinances pertaining to the Department of Public Assembly and Recreation. Ordinance sixty amends sections of chapter ten concerning alcohol and beverages for the, of the Shreveport City Code relative to caterers of alcohol and to otherwise provide with respect there too. Amendment. Ordinance sixty-one also amends chapter ten concerning the manufacturers of alcohol and beverages. Ordinance, this ordinance sixty-one. Ordinance sixty-two authorizes the mayor to execute a lease of city-owned property to Arian L. Pluckett, Inc., and to otherwise provide with respect there too. Ordinance sixty-three amends section, sections of chapter six thirty-six, historic preservation of the city code relative to definitions, duties, appointing alternative members, and removing the requirements for the Metropolitan Planning Commission to approve the historic preservation commission's guidelines. Ordinance sixty-four is, has been withdrawn. Ordinance sixty-five is a zoning matter. It amends chapter one oh six of the code of ordinances by rezoning property located on the south side of Brookholler Drive, four hundred fifteen feet west of Bert Coons Industrial Loop, from B three Community Business District to B three Bud Community Business Land Unit Development District. Those matters.
Mr. Chairman, I move for introduction withdrawing sixty-four.
Thank you.
Motion by Councilman Bradford, second by Councilman Everson. Councilman Corrigan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just had a question of ordinance sixty-two and that can, the response can be emailed back to me.
Sure.
I was curious if this individual is currently operating a convenience store somewhere.
Directly across the street from the terminal.
Okay. Good. No response necessary.
Yes, sir.
Got it.
Please vote.
This question, has he ever done this before?
I was trying to find a nice way to ask that.
And those back.
We're now to ordinances on second reading and final passage. Ordinance forty-eleven is a tax of eighteen and sixteen one hundredths, mils per dollar and all property subject to ad lour taxation within the city of Shreveport for the year twenty seventeen for the purpose of paying principal and interest on the outstanding general obligation bonds of the city of Shreveport.
So moved. Second. Any discussion?
I'm sorry, I'm trying to read something and a colleague here was asking me a question. What is the vote that we're doing right now?
This is resetting the GOB.
Pay increase.
Got it. This is lower.
This is lower.
Any other discussion? Please vote.
Ordinance forty-one, the levy a tax of eight and fifty-five one hundredths, mils per dollar and all property subject to ad lour taxation within the bounds of the downtown development district of the city of Shreveport as defined by Louisiana Revise Statute thirty-three called a twenty-seven forty-four point three eight for the year twenty seventeen and the amounts and for the purposes described herein.
So moved. Second. Motion by Councilman Everson, second by Councilman King. Any discussion?
Now, is this one rolling forward or backward?
This is the current rate of the.
Same rate.
Yes.
Okay.
Will you please vote?
If that was the assessor telling me that, I might not believe it.
And that passes.
Ordinance forty-two levies various taxes totaling seventeen and twenty-nine one hundredths, mils per dollar on all property subject to ad lour taxation within the city of Shreveport for the year twenty seventeen and the amounts and for the purposes described herein.
So moved.
Counselor woman, minutes on.
Yes, now let me ask you about this because I'm reading the background information. And it sounds like this is the one that we relied, we're saying that we relied on information from the tax assessors.
That's correct.
And when we decided to roll back the millage, now we still had some leeway not to do that, correct? Even given the figures that he gave us.
We would have had to petition to roll forward and collect extra taxes on top of what he was telling us that the current property values were.
Which it allows us to do because it's, it's an estimate right forward.
It would have allowed us to do it, but it would have been unprecedented for us to roll those millages forward above what the, what was an overestimation at the time. Generally, the city has positioned itself where they collect the same amount of money each year and we would have just held if they would have come in correct and kept the current rates that are rolled back.
So we're clear, we're on ordinance forty-two, not forty-three.
That's correct.
Okay, so we're.
It's still part of the discussion. Forty-two.
Forty-two and forty-three.
List the current millage, which is required by law. So it's still part of the same discussion.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and so. I don't remember all of the discussion that we had surrounding it, but I am a little concerned. I mean, last year, the money that we didn't get, we didn't get it. It's gone. Okay. I mean, we didn't, we were six hundred thousand short.
We didn't get it, but it was part of the end of the year fund balance.
Right.
So our operating reserve right now is, say, seven point five million dollars. It's really seven million dollars.
Right.
So if it rolled, what we had anticipated in estimation was that that would roll into our operating reserve this year. It's not there. And if we don't roll back forward, you can subtract another six hundred thousand dollars from that operating reserve. So we'll take a one point two million dollar hit.
So do we, are we being optimistic about it increasing going forward? Property values?
I'm hoping that, I mean, we're all hopeful that property values stabilize and that I think the economy in the area is, is kind of actually seeing sales tax increase in the last month. And I think a lot of what we had talked about before, there was some debate as to why the estimated property values went down, but I think it, it would be almost unprecedented to see them go down two years in a row.
And I think the, a couple of weeks ago, we annexed some areas. Did I hear that they were saying that lots were going to be eight hundred and fifty thousand?
I think that the total property value with a lot and a home were thirty-something.
To get.
Yeah. And just that one subdivision was going to bring in about a hundred thousand dollars a year.
Okay, and so if we roll forward, how many years would that be in effect?
It would be in effect until next year's vote, which, and just let me be clear. You're rolling forward to an amount that the voters voted on in two thousand and thirteen and said that the city can go up to this amount. And so all we're doing is abiding by the voters' proxy to say we can go up to this amount. And then in two thousand and eighteen, they will be able to vote on that initiative again.
And if I can piggyback, you all may recall for the past two years, we rolled back taxes on property. So, you know, this council did that. I supported that. We rolled back last year, we rolled back again for twenty fifteen. So with the net from the reduction of the debt, you're still going to be saving taxpayers' money. When you look at the total package here of what's going to happen, you're going to still end up paying less in property taxes.
Mayor, would you say that again?
I said, when you look at, and I believe it's ordinance forty, is it ordinance forty?
Yes, ma'am.
Because we've lowered our debt, that saves taxpayers' property taxes. And even if we roll back in ordinance number, what, forty-three, we roll that forward back to, well, forty-two and forty-three together, if we roll back to where the taxpayers voted for us to be in twenty thirteen, and we roll back to that based on the information that we got last year, that was the prediction that was not there, we still end up with reducing property taxes.
Almost a half a million.
Okay, I, I read the press release. Okay, I just wanted to be clear. Well, let me, let me say, you know, generally, I, I don't support tax increases. I just don't, I never have in the fourteen years I've been in office. But I'm going to, and I'm not necessarily saying this is a tax increase, I'm just, in some people's mind, it's a tax increase. But I'm saying if, if I thought it was a tax increase, I definitely would not be supporting it. But we've annexed so much property. You know, they used to come through the commission, when I was on the commission, we would have to, you know, we couldn't do anything about it, but we would get notifications of city annexations. And certainly in the three years that I've been here, we've done a lot of annexing, stretching resources farther and farther out. And in my mind, to lose any money from the ability to roll to the max millage would not be prudent. And so I think to collect that income up to the maximum to continue to provide services, especially into these areas that we're continuing to annex, not all of them are, you know, really think we should be creating this fraud that we're creating, but, but certainly those services still have to be paid for. And so for that reason, I'm going to be supporting this today. Thank you.
Counselor boys?
Thank you. I just wanted to add to a comment, you know. I completely agree with what Mitch Crawford said earlier, that what happened in two thousand sixteen, that money that did not come in, the revenue that did not come in, that was budgeted, any expenditures associated with that comes out of fund balance. I don't agree with the fact of where we are in two thousand and seventeen and that that will again affect fund balance because we have a choice. We can choose to not expend that amount of money somewhere along the way for the rest of the year and in effect save that amount of money and it won't affect our reserves. Now, I'm sure that there's different views on that, but if, if we have over budgeted revenue and we recognize that by adjusting expenditures accordingly, I'm a simple guy from North Fosier Parish, but that seems like a wash to me.
You from Boston? I don't know that. It's like a picante song from New York City.
And you still. But that's, that's just my thinking.
Counselor Bradford.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, there's a third option too, but I'm not going to go with that. But my question, Mr. Crawford, is simply, and this is a third, three reader, so we should, this, this course should have been asked before, but I'd never heard you mention that the voters approved a maximum.
That's correct.
And what the language is saying by an increase is not actual accurate.
That's correct.
Is we, we are actually adhering to what, what was awarded us.
That's, that's correct.
Is that, so is it language? Because again, we're getting feedback from voters, you know, I don't want to make a tax increase, but, but we explaining it to them that it's not actually, but is that, is it, and it's, if we're going to vote and we're going to support it, but was the language misleading or could there have been a different, a different dialect to the, to the, to the language instead of saying providing for an increase, is there another terminology you could have used?
No, there's not.
The language required by the state statute through Leslie Walter's office is, it requires us to notify the public of that it is a roll forward and provided for specific language that has to be included. So even though there's a net decrease in the property tax assessment that each individual is paying, we still have to notify the public or the state law of the roll forward in that, in that manner, with that.
Okay. And again, this should have been pretty much debated prior to, but I'll just add.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Can we, just as a point of information, let's remember this is two separate ordinances. And could, could the clerk remind us how the two ordinances work together just so that we have the sake of clarity for the record?
Ordinance forty-two just provides the legal statute to recognize the current millage at seventeen twenty-nine, which is supported. Ordinance forty-three will recognize the maximum millage that's allowable by the law which the voters approved in two thousand and thirteen.
And allows us to roll forward.
And allows us to roll forward to that amount.
But don't we need to do forty-two?
That's correct.
Regardless how you stand on forty-three.
Regardless.
We still need that. I think that's a key point.
Absolutely. Yes.
Otherwise.
So you, so you must vote favorable on both.
There may be some argument there, but I just want to make it clear that you definitely need to.
Subliminal messages from the administrations.
And that's right.
Ordinance forty-three provides for an increase in the millage rates whereby the city shall roll forward to millage rates not exceeding the maximum authorized rate and levying various taxes totaling seventeen and six to five one hundredths, mils per dollar and all property subject to ad lour taxation within the city of Shreveport for the year twenty seventeen and the amounts and for the purposes described herein.
So moved, Chairman. Motion by Councilman Bradford, second by Councilman Corrigan. Any discussion? Please vote.
I just have one question. If we do this, we're not going to hear, we don't, we don't have money for this event for all year, rest of the year.
Never again, never again.
We struggling, but we still trying to bring in those resources. We need them. We're trying to raise it and all the back.
And that voting passes.
Mr. Chairman, we're now to ordinance forty-five. This is the companion to ordinance forty-one. It provides for an increase in the millage rates whereby the Shreveport Downtown Development Authority shall roll forward to millage rates not exceeding the maximum authorized rate and levying.
and levying various taxes totaling eight and sixty-four one-hundredths mils per dollar in all properties subject to adverbal taxation within the bounds of the downtown development district of the city of Shreveport as defined by Louisiana Revised Statute Thirty, Thirty, Twenty-Four Forty Point Two Eight Three Eight for the year 2017 in the amounts of other purposes described herein.
So move, Chair. Second. Motion by Counselor Bradford, second by Counselor, ever so to discuss.
Yes, I wanted to know how much additional money is this going to be?
Net to the organization, it's eight thousand dollars.
Please vote.
Ms. Chairman, we're now under ordinance forty-seven, it amends a 2017 budget for the National Planning and Mission Special Revenue Fund budget. There was one amendment that I believe has been withdrawn by the chair, as I believe. So an ordinance to adopt, ordinance, a motion to adopt ordinance forty-seven will be adopted.
So move, Chair. Second. Motion by Counselor Bradford, second by Counselor, open to discussion.
Order forty-seven, board's well.
And you concur?
Would. Withdrawn.
Okay.
Oh, is that the motion?
Yes.
No, no, we didn't need a motion to withdraw. The motion is to adopt.
Yeah, I'll just say, well, see, did you concur with the withdrawing, and you said yes? Are we good?
Why are you withdrawing? I missed it, I'm sorry. Why are you withdrawing? Do you still miss it?
I had a tip in this thing.
Will you leave these people alone?
He has a right to, he has a right to, he has a right to change my mind. He met with some people and he got some clearer, clearer, so he's good, aight. But he done it too till it just.
We need to let Boston do that.
I'm getting this one right there.
Voting on the MPC?
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven, okay. And that is.
Counselor. Oh, I'm sorry.
And that.
Ms. Chairman, we're now to ordinance number fifty, it amends a 2017 capital improvements budget. There is one amendment. Amendment number one inserts in program C, Streets and Bridges, Bridges, increasing appropriation for collector roadway asphalt program, five million three hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars, funding source of street special revenue fund. This amendment allocates five million three hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars to the collector roadway asphalt program. This is a companion to the.
Do I have a motion? Send me the amendment. Second. Who's the first? Okay. Counselor Corbin, motion, and second by Counselor Bowman. Any discussion? Please vote. Motion to the man of Counselor Corbin. Second by Counselor. Counselor Logan, any discussion? Please vote. Motion here.
That was to adopt ordinance fifty as an amendment. Ordinance fifty-one is a series ordinance pursuant to the 2016 General Revenue Bond Ordinance, authorizing the issuance of not exceeding one hundred million dollars of water and sewer revenue bonds, Series 2017A, and Water and Sewer Revenue Bonds, Junior Lean Series 2017B, of the city of Shreveport, as provided in a notice of intent given by resolution of the thirty of 2017, adopted on March the fourteenth, 2017, establishing certain details of such bonds as required by the 2016 General Revenue Bond Ordinance, approving and confirming the sale of such bonds to a group of underwriters led by Seibert, Sisnoz, Schenck and Company, LLC, pledging the net revenues of the city's combined water and sewer system to secure such bonds, describing the form and certain terms and conditions of said bonds, and providing other matters in connection with herewith.
Move, adoption, Chair. Counselor Bradford, second. Second by Counselor Woman Lynch. Any discussion? Please vote.
Who are you waiting on?
Councilor.
It's my fault, it's probably not. It's time to.
Click it again, it's flashing sometimes.
You gotta work harder, man.
You got the young man?
Yeah.
Apparently, I was a word card. Clearly green, that is supposed to be on my box.
Mr. Chairman, I believe that there's a motion, I mean, there's a request, will be city attorney to postpone ordinance number fifty-two.
Number fifty-two.
Just for the record, it will not affect the issuances on a hundred million dollars or the DEQ loan, there's just some loose ends we need to tie up in capital one, and we just need another week.
Motion by Counselor Corbin, second by Counselor Bowman. Any discussion? Please vote. Motion here.
Ordinance number fifteen is a series ordinance pursuant to the general bond ordinance authorizing the issuance of not exceeding twenty million dollars principal water and taxable water and sewer revenue bonds, Junior Lean Series 2017D, of the city of Shreveport, state of Louisiana, provided in a notice of intent, given by resolution of the thirty-eighth of 2017, adopted on March the fourteenth, 2017, establishing certain details of such bonds as required by the general bond ordinance, approving and confirming the sale of such bonds to the Clean Water State Revolving Fund, pledging the net revenues of the city's combined water and sewer system to secure such bonds, prescribing the form and certain terms and conditions of said bonds, and providing other matters in connection herewith.
Second. Okay, motion by Counselor Woman Lynch, and second by Counselor Bowman. Is there any discussion? Please vote. Motion pass.
Ms. Chairman, yesterday, there was a discussion about removing ordinance number fifty-four. We still have to do that, we need a motion in a second.
Motion to second eighty-four, second by Counselor Bowman. Any discussion? Please vote. Motion here.
We're now to ordinance number fifty-five, it's a companion to amendment to ordinance number fifty, which was just previously adopted. It amends a 2017 street special revenue fund budget appropriating the funds authorized there and otherwise provided with respect there too. That's for the five million three hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars.
So, motion by Counselor Woman Lynch, second by Counselor Bowman. Motion, second. And motion pass.
Ms. Chairman, those are all of the items on the regular agenda, I'm not aware of any matter to be removed from the table.
Okay, well, that brings us down to appeal. We have no property. Standing for appeals today, Mr. Thompson?
We have none, we have no appeals today.
Absolutely none.
Absolutely none.
Are there any reports from officers, boards, or committees? Mr. Thompson, is there a first report?
The mayor has appointed an assistant city attorney, Shelby Grant, you heard from her yesterday, her appointee will be on the agenda at the next meeting.
At the next council?
Ms. Chairman, I'm sorry, I didn't want to interrupt the clerk, is that your founder?
That's it.
Ms. Chairman, I was looking at the calendar, and we are fortunate that we will have an extra week of time, and I was wondering, next to the city attorney, because we are three weeks away, is this position one that you can utilize prior to three weeks?
Yes, sir, it's vacant right now, and we can fill it soon and later, if that's right.
So, Ms. Chairman, I'd like to suspend the rules and confirm attorney Grant today.
Okay, we have a second. That's a second, Counselor, vote, any discussion? Please vote. Okay, motion pass.
Ms. Chairman, I move that attorney Grant would be confirmed as assistant city attorney.
Second. Okay, motion by Counselor Bradford, second by Counselor Emerson. Is there any discussion? Please vote. And that motion pass, congratulations to the commander and to Counselor Mayor.
Thank you so much, we appreciate it, we need it.
That brings us to Mr. Thompson, was there anything else that you had?
I have nothing else, Ms. Chair.
Additional communications from the mayor?
None, thank you, sir.
Additional communications from the council members?
Thank you very much, and we can talk a little bit more later, but I did want to take this opportunity on behalf of the city council to recognize one of our greatest team members, who this is her final meeting with us before she enjoys her well-deserved retirement, Ms. Beatrice Johnson.
Thank you all, thank you. Mr. Thompson, thank you for the opportunity, thank you. To the council members, thank you for the opportunity served.
Ms. Chairman, as a previous council chair, I would be remiss if I did not express my sincere appreciation to Ms. Johnson for her great assistance to the chair, and her effective and proficient service on this panel, as well as her minutes and her overall presence of excellence within the council office. I wish her well in her further endeavors, and I appreciate the opportunity to have worked with you, Mrs. Beatrice Johnson. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Chair, I recognize Counselor Woman Lynch.
I try to keep this clean, Queen Bee. I don't want to get too much into your business, but I do want to let you know that I respect the decision that you, you know, felt that you had to make for your family. I lost my sister at thirty-nine years old, and, well, she was thirty-nine. You know, and sometimes I often wonder about, you know, what I could have done, what I should have done, you know, just, you just have those thoughts when you're dealing with family, and so I appreciate, you know, the decision that you made, you know, for your family. And I'll be praying for you, and I pray that God's blessing upon you for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Amen.
I just wanted to say, I appreciate Miss Bee for listening to me as a, as some say, a newbie. A lot of things I didn't understand, and she broke it down to me as a newbie, she would understand, if that makes sense. And not only has been a difference to my mom, but I just, I really do appreciate that time and the time now, and I want to say thank you, Father.
Ms. Chairman.
One second, then I'll hand it over your way, I just wanted to add, just quickly, how much, you know, for those who hadn't, you know, those of us on city council, I think we all know just how incredible and valuable you are, but I think, you know, those in the public may not get a chance to see the incredible role that you play, and not only do you, you know, get the documentation and the reporting, you know, out in a timely and reliable fashion, and do all the other specific duties of your job, but the heart that you watch over everybody in the office, the goodwill that you, you know, add to what can be a very stressful set of circumstances from time to time, you know, the good humor that you bring, just, you don't know how valuable that is and how beneficial that has been to the city. And I just have to say, you know, I think we've all said it in our own ways, but I mean, it is so appreciated, and you are so appreciated. Chair, I recognize this.
Thank you so much, thank you so much, Mr. Chair and Mr. Vice Chair. I too would like to express deep appreciation, even though Ms. Johnson didn't work directly for the mayor, she worked for the city council, but she worked with our office, and she helped us so much, being a newbie mayor, but she was always there, she's the one that I used to meet at seven in the morning in the garage, coming up to work, their first one. And I just want to tell you that your service is invaluable, and I'll say what Angela Bassett said on one of the movies I saw, "But I'm mad at you, B, because you're leaving." But I do want to say to you, though, that I wish God speed blessings on the next era in your life, and I know it'll be exciting, because you do keep us lighthearted, and thank you for all that you've done for the citizens of Shreveport. Oftentimes, people don't know what people do in positions such as yours, because you're not out there and you're not seen, but without your service, this council could not have run the way it has run and have what they need to be able to make those decisions. So thank you so much, and God bless you.
Thank you.
I'll say one thing. Sure. I don't know if that's, I always hate to see a fellow veteran leave in service, that's a sad point for us all, and it's quickly for a time new, you have very big shoes to fill. So you better, you better get some good last few days here.
She got it.
Vice Chair, I recognize Counselor Corbin.
Thank you. Like Counselor Bowman said, you have been a big help when I first came out, and we've had a number of lively conversations, kind of offline, that we can't talk about in this meeting, but I think the other thing that we're gonna, that we're gonna miss is your LMA connections as well, and the hard work you've done with that organization, and representing Shreveport and all of us with LMA, and, you know, your years and your hard work are appreciated, and you will be missed.
Thank you.
Yes, she would tour me around the other way and tell me where to go and what not to go.
Vice Chair, I recognize Attorney Bradford.
Ms. Bee, I just wanted to say to my office, thank you, you shepherded us through a lot of tough times, you gave us notices and things we had to do, and I know Counselor Corbin won't talk about the conversation, but I will. I'll say, Bee would always ask me to say, now, you're the attorney, so if I get in trouble, you're gonna get me out, right? Get me in trouble with you, but we love you and we'll miss you too, we'll see you turn it off.
Thank you.
Bee, I have three words for you. I love you, I'll always love you, and I wish you the very best.
Thank you.
That sound like a song you shouldn't have said.
I see how she gave all these newbies all this help, and I went in there, she told me, girl, you're gonna be all right. I was being that help, I see. Okay.
I have Mr. Ryan Kiel, wish you the peace of free speech, Mr. Kiel. My name is Ryan Keel, Christ Evangelistic Outreach, and I'm from Texarkana, Arkansas. And I don't know how I'm supposed to follow that, after that, but my wife, she works for the Miller County in Arkansas, so I know the value of having someone who knows what they're doing in government, and so you all are losing a great treasure, I know, but I just come today to, first of all, I want to thank the office of the mayor, I want to thank the office of the city attorney, and also the district attorney for their prompt response and consideration concerning an issue that happened to us last year on May the twenty-eighth, two thousand sixteen. My son and I were illegally arrested at the Mudbug Festival on Crockett Street, and we were just out there preaching the gospel on public property, just sharing, just sharing the good news and also giving out gospel tracts and material. The individual, one of the organizers of the Mudbug Festival, didn't want us there, and so they called the police, of course, long story short, we were arrested and detained for over four hours. Like I said before, I want to thank the office of the mayor for their prompt response, and I really appreciate the consideration, but our intention is to return this weekend, we are gonna return, so we're hoping and praying to avoid any additional problems. We were on public property, we understand the laws that's given to us by the Louisiana State Constitution and also United States Constitution, we fully abide by those, and we want, we'll continue to do so, but we do intend on exercising our rights. And Louisiana Constitution, Article One, Section Five, excuse me, Section, Section Seven, the freedom of expression, no law shall contain or restrain the freedom of speech or of the press. Every person may speak, write, and publish his sentiments on any subject, but is responsible for the, for the abuse of that freedom. And also the freedom of religion, no law shall be enacted respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof. That's all we want to do, that's all we, that's all we endeavor to do, is just to exercise our freedom of speech, religion, freedom of press in America as an American citizen, you know, just like they have the right to sell alcohol, play music, do whatever, whatever else they want to do, we have the right to share the good news. The same constitution that backs that backs our rights, and so an organization for these festivals cannot use the city police as their own private security force. When they rent the festival plaza, they must take that into consideration. Thank you, is there any questions?
Mr. Keel, I have one question and comment, and I remember your case clearly, and you mentioned your, your right as a citizen, and I can agree with your right, I would, I would defend your right, but it was my understanding that there was some obstruction of traffic, and you was asked on several occasions to relocate, and, and your refusal to relocate created the incident that you spoke of. Do you agree, or don't agree, that we also are a society of laws, and if you are instructed by a law official, that you should adhere to that request?
I agree that we have rights in this nation, first of all, that give me the right to do this, in terms of obstruction, we were not prohibiting the regress or egress of traffic, we were standing, just like other people were standing, talking to people, walking back and forth. My right as a citizen of the United States supersedes an order or command, and in this instance, an illegal order or, or an illegal command from a peace officer.
My question is simple, if you are given a direct request or a demand by a law enforcement officer, do you feel compelled to comply with that?
I feel compelled to first state my rights to that law enforcer.
But there's a place and a time to do that.
I feel, well, that's the time, when he, when he approaches, when he approaches me, I explain to him kindly that I am on public property, this is America.
Mr. Keel, you can be on any property, but if you are violating a, a...
No, you can't speak on any property, you can't, it's got to be public property.
Well, I'm saying that, I don't want to debate that, but I mean, my, my, my issue was, and I would, I would hope that we can do everything we can to avoid a civil incident, but I'm just saying, if you are being approached by a law enforcement officer and given a command that, that you need to relocate, that you would be receptive to that, to that request?
I am receptive to all law enforce, law enforcement, all of them, but we have laws, they are the enforcers of those laws, sometimes there's some misunderstandings about where a person can stand or where they're actually standing, that's all, we just have to know where a person is standing, if it's a sidewalk, it's public property, it's public access, you can't restrict the freedom of speech on public access, on public property, that's all.
Okay, well, I'm just, I respectfully disagree, 'cause I, you, you, you're given commands in different areas, if the, if the red light was out, and the, and the police officer was directing you to come through the light, you would adhere to that, okay? Because that's a public red light, but I'm just saying that, that you have to be, be very, be very understanding that when authority figures are giving you directions, you may disagree with it, but that, but to confront a law officer at, at that particular issue is not the way it's handled, and I think the city attorney mentioned that to you.
Well, actually, it's been, the charges were dropped, so if I had done something wrong, there would be no need to drop charges, so the charges were dropped.
I'm not gonna say that, that's not...
Well, the charges were dropped, sir, I want everybody to understand that, the charges were dropped, the situation was a total misunderstanding, there were other police officers who did not agree, but they, they just abided by the rest of the, you know, what the others wanted to do, so...
I'm not a law enforcement officer, I'm just saying, I would, I would hope...
I don't have anything negative to say about the, the, the city of Shreveport Police or anything, the, the situation was handled, it's, it's, it's over, but I, I was the one that was put in jail, so I'm just here to make sure that that does not happen again, like I told you before, last time we were here, I had no desire to litigate, I had no desire to, to attack the city in that way, because I'm from Texarkana, I consider Shreveport a sister, a sister city, so I don't want to harm you in any way, but I, I do want to exercise the rights given to me as an American citizen.
My last comment is that we are a city of laws, you know, of partnerships and of codes, and that we would expect for all law-abiding citizens to, to adhere to, to the laws of this country and of this city and of this state.
And I've done that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I've done that, thank you.
Vice Chair, recognize Councilwoman Lynch.
I, I don't, you can stay, but I, I don't really have a question of you, but what I, what I do want to, I guess, since you're coming back this weekend, I don't know, y'all need to get together or something and get a good understanding, I mean, I don't really, I, I don't have an issue with the, you know, the, you know, you passing out tracts or, you know, talking to people about Jesus, I've been on Bourbon Street, they have people in the middle of the street talking, doing the same thing, okay? And so, so I, I don't, I don't see that, you know, really as an issue for me in, in terms of that, but I, I'm not clear that we have a good understanding on what's going to be allowed or accepted or safe, you know, from a public safety standpoint, so I don't know who he needs to talk to, or who needs to be communicating over the next few days, but I would hope that, that, and maybe, you know, it's, it's the mayor's office, the city attorney, or the SBB, or whomever, just to have that understanding.
I believe it's been settled already, I believe.
Okay.
We've had, yeah, we've, we've had other, you know, we've had other discussions with different police supervisors in different areas, I think it's been settled.
Okay, okay, all right, so you're, you're clear on where you can stand, or talk, or pass out tracts, or whatever?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Right, Councilman, I just had a quick question, I'm just curious, with this kind of proselytizing, do you pick up any new church members?
Well, I'm, I'm an evangelist, I'm an evangelist, so I don't have a church, but our people have been very receptive.
I just didn't know if it's effective, I mean, I...
It's wonderfully effective, especially in, in Shreveport, it's been wonderfully effective, we, we go to New Orleans, we go to New Orleans, we just came back from Lafayette, you know, we, we, we left the, the large festival in Lafayette, Lafayette International Festival, we just came back from there, and, you know, it's, it's, we go all, we go all over Louisiana and Arkansas and Texas for the most part, but it's been wonderfully received, and so, you know, you always have some people that don't like it, but it's just, some people desire it also, so it's just, it's just one of those things that we have in America that gives us the right to do these things, it's what makes us Americans, what makes America, America. If we lose the freedom of expression, the freedom of religion, the freedom of speech, we lose everything.
Got it, I, I'm just curious, I mean, I've, I've seen it before too, in places, and sometimes I think people feel threatened by it in a way that I'm not used to in my religious tradition seeing, but everybody's different, and certainly have respect for
After a few hurricanes, you just kind of...
Yeah, me, my man, I'm usually, all right.
I hope to get you off them hurricanes, but that's all right.
All right.
Next, we have Mr. Jeffrey Jackson, is Jeffrey Jackson here? Jeffrey Jackson? Mr. Billy Roy Wayne? Hey, Councilman. Due process for citizen.
Good afternoon, Billy Roy Wayne, six to one forty-four Farrington Court, Shreveport, Louisiana, seven eleven two nine. I come today with a couple of comments concerning something that was on the agenda, but yet it wasn't. For years, I've been of concern about when we start naming entities and dedicating streets and naming facilities in honor of individuals, and sometime I think we get trapped up in the heat of the moment, and we get trapped up in the emotional aspects of it, and we end up doing something and naming something that will historically be seen forever, yet we have not done due diligence in regards to the people that we are naming these things for and in honor of. I have a concern, because those of us who are truly community citizens, we love the movers and the shakers in the community, those who let our bands politically correct as others, they do not know, nor will they ever get an opportunity to make their claim that there are some people down the street who will wrap circles around the persons that you just named something in honor of. All I'm asking is that as elected officials, do our due diligence, don't get caught up in the heat of the moment, or don't get caught up in the politics involved, because citizens know better, and they feel as though they're being ostracized and divided when they see people who are not necessarily, you know, has nothing to do with what you did today. I've been saying this for years, anytime a person just is simply doing their job, why would they allow something awful to them and they gotta check? And that's most of the time what people are doing, people are only doing their job, and they don't do it any better than anyone else. Please make sure in the future that we do our due diligence and we check to make sure that we're not just doing something to be politically correct.
Thank you, Mr. Wayne. Next, we have Ms. Gloria Prelow, a claim for profit.
Good evening, good evening. Everybody gone to sleep? My name is Gloria Prelow, my husband and I were here yesterday for about three hours, and I'm not complaining, we were overlooked or forgotten about at the end of the city council meeting, which was a work session, and that's fine, Mr. Councilman Flurry, Chairman, did extend his apologies, and we accepted those. However, my husband couldn't be here today, our address is sixty-six forty-four North Lake Shore Drive, Shreveport, seven one one zero seven. My husband and I have lived here in Shreveport most of our lives, we are both retirees, I retired from cattle parish schools board, school system, couple, three years ago or so, also, my husband retired from working fifteen years at Raleigh Beard and thirty years at LSU Health Science Center. We think that we are what we call good citizens, we work for what we have, God has helped multiply it, and we praise Him for that, and we don't ask for anything that we don't feel like we're due. I'm here to talk about this claim that we filed on March the twenty-second, two thousand seventeen, I passed out these papers on yesterday to all the, well, I asked a young lady to pass it out to all of you, and hopefully you were concerned enough to read it, one of those papers were, was the intake claim form that Ms. Evelyn Kelly wrote up, assuming, and it was very inaccurate, I didn't know what was written up until May ninth, when I came and picked up a copy of it. Anyway, when I did read it, it was not what actually happened out at our rental property, and this whole claim came about due to an incident with the city claw truck that came out to pick up some tree branches and brush off the curb side of our rental property in Greenbrook subdivision. This is El eight seven zero two, Elbert Circle, it's a one little small circle, the house we have is in the middle of that circle, you can stand in the driveway and talk to everybody in that little circle, you can see what's going on all over that little circle in one area. Anyway, after filing the claim on March twenty-second, we received a denial of the claim, it was denied by Ms. Kelly, it seemed that she was a one department judge jury and whatever, we never saw anybody that came out to investigate the damage, we, I talked to Ms. Kelly, first person I talked to and tried to reach the right place to file the claim was Ms. Roslin on Monday, the twentieth, when we discovered the damage. Ms. Roslin briefly told me that I needed to talk to Ms. Evelyn Kelly, and she took my name and number, and I never heard from Ms. Kelly until, well, I didn't hear from her that Monday, so Tuesday, I called risk management again, and I spoke with a Ms. Beverly Woods, and she told me briefly that I needed to talk to Ms. Evelyn Kelly, and so I, I heard from Ms. Kelly later on that two, that Wednesday, she called me back, called me, and she is the one that I gave the report to about what happened.
Ms. Peter?
Yes.
I, I, I don't think that's up rudely, I'm just, I think it's time for the city attorney to weigh in on this.
Well, I would like for him to, I've left several messages...
Because your time has expired, you only gave him three minutes.
Okay, well, yesterday I had three minutes, but I didn't get to use it, so maybe I can use that three today. Okay, city attorney, Mr. Bradford, would you...
Yes, ma'am.
Tell me what, well, you told me yesterday I would get a letter about the request that I made?
Yes, ma'am. I've spoken again with our deputy city attorney, I know she did, I know you said that she didn't hear from our office, but you did, you heard from our deputy city attorney.
I talked to Ms. Tuck... To Ms. Tucker.
Yes, ma'am. And the claim was denied. We're not gonna speak about it in open forum like this, because it is a claim that you filed against the city of Shreveport, but we have stated to you our position and what recourse you have or your next phases. Ms. Tucker's talked to you. I know I wouldn't advise the council to speak any further on the claim, pending open claim against the city of Shreveport at this time, but we've done what we can to try and communicate.
Why is it open when you've already denied it?
Year before the council's speaking on a claim that you have, and you have rights.
And it was denied by your office.
Exactly. And you have, you have rights, but I have to advise the council not to continue to speak on a matter that was brought before that could potentially lead to future litigation that had a claim pending, or that was an open claim.
It's not, I didn't know it was pending.
You brought a claim against the city of Shreveport that was...
And it was denied clearly on the paperwork that I gave them.
Okay, and I've stated to you the position of our office as it relates to your claim. Ms. Tucker's spoken with you, is that, that's correct, right?
She did not tell me anything that I didn't already know. She read me.
We'll send you a follow-up letter. I know they've sent you one, we'll send you another one, okay?
No, you haven't sent me anything.
You received a denial letter, right?
That was from Ms. Kelly.
She works through our office, okay?
Oh, your name wasn't on it, so I didn't know.
I understand.
I'm not that familiar with city of Shreveport government. So that's why I'm here. I'm trying to get familiar with how the process works.
Yes, ma'am, and that's what we spoke about yesterday too, so.
No, you did not. You told me I would get a letter, but you didn't tell me, you told me that letter would be concerning the records that I requested.
Yes, ma'am. Would you like to explain that to her after? Would you like to explain it to her again after?
Yes. The process of...
Tell me what you have to say.
The records of what? Did you all have anybody to go out?
I'll be glad to speak with you after.
You've already spoken with me yesterday, and you didn't tell me anything. So let me ask, is there anybody here that can tell me, is there a follow-up process after a denial?
There is. I will be the person to talk to you about that, but I'll do that.
Okay, so you're going to write me down or draw me a picture of the process for denial?
I'll speak with you after the meeting, and we'll send you a follow-up letter, okay?
Okay. That's all I was dealing.
Thank you.
Last, we now have Mr. Sammy Mears. Mr. Sammy was named Outstanding Serviceman of the Year at his church.
Almost, almost today I felt like Kevin O'Leary in Dr. Phil Look. Sammy Mears, 1901 Centenary Boulevard, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71101. On May 11th, 2017, at the Christian Life Center at Springs and Grace Baptist Church, Teresa Huppin, our CLC director, was getting rid of a lot of junk and almost threw a trophy cup away that looked really nice. And I told her, in quote, "If you throw that trophy cup away, you'll regret it for the rest of your life and forever." Well, she went on ahead and gave it to me and named me Serviceman of the Year. I went to the Smith Petty and corporate on East Kings Highway, and they fixed it up on a marble unit, and it was engraved, and it says, "Springs and Grace Baptist Church honors Sammy Mears for Outstanding Serviceman of the Year, May 11th, 2017." I feel very happy to come and share that information here today with the council, but the only thing is, as well, oh, yes, as well as people who might be watching, I wanted to bring the trophy cup today, but the reason that I didn't was because we had too much rain that was going on, which was 90%. And when you have 90% rain, you don't want a chance bringing out a trophy cup that might get ruined. So that's why I couldn't do that, but maybe in a few weeks, when the weather's better, I can chance that then. I should, I should have had the award years ago, except that we had like Outstanding Layman of the Year Award, and that went to a deacon all the time, which of course, I'm not. So I felt kind of left out. I felt like I might have been upstaged. Well, not anymore, not this time today, because I've got a news flash. This is one award that none of the deacons are gonna win. It is my trophy cup, and when it comes time for sunshine again that will not stand in the way of having any rain, I will bring it down here, and I really wanted to, Jeff, but the thing is, we had so much rain yesterday, 90%, and I had to go do my laundry over at the coin laundry, and I got it home safe and all, but I didn't beg for all that rain. And if I know the woman, she's probably happy with the 329 cups that she was telling me about on my machine earlier today when I left the apartment, because she said she got 162 cups the other day, and then yesterday she got 197, which makes 329 cups that she's rain cup happy. Oh, he wants 10 seconds?
He's gotta yield 10 seconds. That way we don't need another three minutes. He yielded to me, is that okay?
Sure. Don't waste it. Don't waste it.
All right, I dropped off some of these with B. Ms. B had to leave, but anybody who wants to quit smoking, pick up one of these tobacco cessation things at no charge at Willis Knight in Pyramid. And the last time I'll mention it, for five weeks today, we've already saved $400. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, hello. We have to, we have to congratulate Sammy on his, on this award. You know, Sammy comes here and he is civic-minded, he invites us to participate in various events, and he promotes various events. What's coming up, Sammy, that you told me was coming up?
MDA. Sammy is starting to raise his MDA.
That almost slipped my mind. Yes, I'm glad you brought that up. Yes, MDA will be coming up around close to September, and if anyone would like to help me out with that, I'll be available. I'm saving up right now, and I got about, I think about $65 already saved up in my MDA can.
But I just wanted, on behalf of the council members, to at least express our congratulations to you on your achievement at your church.
Yeah, I am too, because I never had an Outstanding Serviceman of the Year Award, and the Outstanding Layman, yeah, Outstanding Layman of the Year Award, it always went to a deacon. Of course, I know I'm not a deacon, but...
See, your work is not being...
It's not being overlooked, in other words.
Either ignored or unappreciated. Thank you.
So in other words, it was not being overlooked. Let me just say this before I slip. I am going to definitely bring the trophy cup in a few weeks. I wanted to, but this rain could have messed it up, and I don't know if it messes up gold or not, but I just didn't want to.
We look forward to seeing it then, Sammy.
I do. Very charging thrill out of it.